This conference will now be recorded.
There's no one signing in here, the regent is missing.
Ready?
Okay.
You guys can turn on.
Okay. All right, thank you everyone for attending tonight. Today is the regular monthly meeting for the Clinton Inland Weapons Commission, Tuesday, August 1st. Time is 7:06 PM. Sherry, could you call up the time?
Tanya Appatello?
Here.
Edward Alvarino?
Here.
Michael Florio?
Here.
Robert de France, advisor, he is not available tonight. Virgil Schmitz?
Here.
Rodney Cartel?
Here.
Scott Harley?
Here.
Lawrence Edwards?
Here.
And Kimberly Lombard has been signed.
So we'll see Larry or Rob. So you're voting tonight, Sherry. All right, first, we need to act on the minutes of the July 11th, 2023 regular meeting. If there's no changes, I'll take a motion to approve those ones.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ryan, second. Any discussion minutes from last month's meeting? All those vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those abstaining, question carries. Item agenda number three, receipt of applications. I believe we don't have any new applications.
We don't have any new applications tonight.
Along to agenda number four, administrative review. So we have several applications that are up for tonight. First one's going to be IWC 23-4. This is 56 West Shore Drive. Gibson Jara is the applicant and owner. This is for application for regulated activities within zero feet to 100 feet of the inland wetlands or water course. This application's for a stone retaining wall, stone steps, dock, deck, gravel parking area, stone paper patio, stone walls outside our house. This could be accessories, map 14, block four, lot 14, zone R30. And before we get to discussing this application, we just need to review and make action on the July 20th, 2023 special meeting, which was our site walk. I guess just administratively, do if do we, can we accept all the meeting minutes now, or do we need to individually?
You need to do it individually.
Okay, for each?
For each.
Right, okay. So based on the meeting minutes from the site walk, does anyone have any modifications? Or if we're okay with that, I'll take a motion to approve the special meeting.
So this is just for 56 West Shore Drive?
This is the one that has several different options that are being changed, correct?
Correct.
It's got the front area, the walkways, the walkway, the back, the deck.
Yep.
And the stairs going down. And they want to put steps going into the water, so.
Correct. Any comments on the special meeting minutes? Not, you can make a motion to approve those. I'll make a motion to approve the special meeting, Sherry.
Uh, so I'll start.
Any discussion on the meeting minutes just for?
Fifty-six minutes.
Yeah, minutes just per 56 West Shore Drive. Okay, all those vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstaining? Okay. So for this property, there has, there was a petition that's been signed by more than 25 members of the public, which means that it automatically will go to a public hearing. So this properties or this application will take up as a public hearing at next month's regular monthly hearing. The only action we need to do, and we can do it by consensus of the commission, we need to determine if it's a significant activity. So it's been a while since we talked about that. So why don't I give the definition of significant activity? And I've just had a discussion as a commission whether you think that this application warrants it. So by our regulations, significant activity means any activity including but not limited to the following activities, which may have a substantial effect on the area for which an application has been filed or another part of the inland wetland water course system. A, any activity involving the deposition or removal of material which will or may have a substantial effect on the regulated area or another part of the inland wetland water course system. B, any activity which substantially changes the natural channel or may inhibit the natural dynamics of water course. C, any activity which substantially diminishes the natural capacity of an inland wetland or water course to support desirable fisheries, wildlife, biological life, prevent flooding, supply water, simulate waste, facilitate drainage, provide recreation, or open space or other functions. D, any activity which causes substantial turbidity, siltation, or sedimentation in the wetland or water course. E, any activity which causes a substantial diminution of flow of a natural water course or prime water levels of a regulated area. Any activity which causes or has a potential to cause pollution to a wetland or water course. Any activity which creates conditions which may adversely affect the health, welfare, or safety of any individual or community, or any activity which destroys unique wetland or water course areas having demonstrable scientific or educational value. That's enough. So that is what is considered a significant activity by our regulations. So would this property be considered a significant activity? We can determine that just by consensus.
So I'll say personally, I don't think so. But does the petition negate that any my sense of?
The only difference would be if we determined it's a significant activity, it adds additional requirements to the application.
Regardless, it's going down.
The only thing I got an issue with is the stone stairs going, it's older lake and there's natural boulders there that have been there for tens of thousands of years. And, you know, they want to pin new stone off of some of the ethistic boulders.
So that they're. But there were stairs in there prior to the rip. No.
Well, there were, but they were wooden stairs.
Yeah, the wooden, and they brought it away, but they weren't pinned into the. Yeah, wooden.
So pinning them would be, there is a spot between the two boulders that it can be pinned from. If they're able to do that, it's not a very wide spot. But they're, you know, they can get a couple of pins in there to hold the bottom ledge that they're going to put in there, you know, without damaging any of the other boulders. But I think they wanted to sort of bolt into the top of the boulders. So let's say it's refaced in 50 years, there's going to be some damage to the existing boulders.
That was my concern too, because once, once you pin it, you open it up, that rock, and over the rough years, the water will get in there. That's how the Indians break rocks. So if you got a crack in there, it'll fill up with water. And then as it freezes, it'll break those rocks apart. And those rocks, they pull away. So the question I was. That's my.
Do you think that the proposed improvement or the proposed application is considered a significant activity?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say yes. Because.
On that one, on that one issue.
On that one issue, yeah.
Okay.
Everything else.
Everything else is a liar.
Yeah, you need to say which, which section of the significant impact criteria that the commission finds to be applicable here? And then if you find a significant impact, maybe we need to provide a hundred percent.
I do think there's a way for him to go ahead with the project, you know, with pinning it, but doing it not on the boulders. So I mean, the boulders look a little bit low, you know, that's. And I think the architect can, you know, see that.
With the architect, yeah, with the architectural designer, they follow that.
Doesn't the?
That's not good, yeah.
The dock creating turbidity from that? Is it late for the dock? I mean, I'm just saying, that was the thing I forgot when you said the definition.
That's why, with all, with all due respect for him, that's why you have 25 people about problem with this. Because it is called boulder lake. The boulders are beautiful, the boulders are inside people's homes.
Right.
I've been at a few homes that have several problems before. And the houses are gorgeous with the rock inside.
Yeah.
When you start, when you start breaking rock and cutting it or drilling it, you're, you're, you're disturbing the contour of the rock.
Right.
And with water, water, hydrology of water, right?
They get in there.
They'll get in there and just break it apart.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's going to ruin the aesthetics of everything.
Right.
That's my only problem with the whole project.
There may be a way for him to pin this behind it too.
Behind the boulders, thoughts on it?
Consider it. You're an engineer, Bert, what do you think?
I agree, I agree with most of what everybody was talking about here. Now, I've got some experience upstate New York on rocks. And you do have to, you do have to consider them when they're doing some construction work.
Well, if you want to make a motion, that is a sample motion for determination of a significant activity.
I'd like to make a motion on IWC 23-4. That the project stone retaining wall, 16 by three, the length type three height and 16 width gravel. Do I have to read each, each, everything?
No, some quick summary.
Okay. Anyway, so the, there's two stone walls on the side of the front of the house and the street. So this is more for the back. It is a significant activity. So I moved it to Clinton Inland Weapons, this is Tommy Clinton, find that the activity associated with IWC 23-4, 56 West Shore Drive, Gibson Jara, applicant owner, application for activities in or within 50 feet of inland wetlands or water course. Stone retaining wall, 16 length type three height, type 16 width gravel. Two, five stone steps, four by sevens, going to the dock. Eight by pressure treated wood. So these two stone walls on the side, the stone patio on the side of the house. There's two, there are two stone walls on the side of the neighbors and the side of the house. Assessors map 14, lot four, lot 14. Zone R30 is a significant activity as defined in the inland weapons, the water course regulations of the Tommy Club, section 2.201A and water course regulations of the Tommy Club, 2.201A through 2.2018. And the virtual call carry will be held on Tuesday, what's the date?
September 5th?
September.
September 5th. September 5th at 7 o'clock.
Do I have a second?
What? Pointing board?
Seconding.
So this is.
Just a point of order. Um, I think he said a virtual.
Did you say?
Yeah. Not virtual.
Oh, it'll be in person.
Yeah, it'll be in person, I'm sorry. They came.
That's our old motion.
Yeah. Oh, did I say virtual? Where did I say that?
It's okay.
Down there.
It's all right. I'm sorry.
Doesn't change it.
No more virtual.
We're in person.
We should have been out of there two years ago.
So.
Okay, so voting in favor of that, all?
Uh, so I need a second?
I'd second.
I'd second.
Any discussion?
Say, emotion?
No discussion, okay. All those voting in favor of determination of a significant activity, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All those voting against, say nay.
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 Oh, okay.
You're two aces?
Two nays. Five ahs. So motion passes.
Who will be what chairing?
We are Harley and Cartel.
Okay, so considered a significant activity. T A T A.
T A.
Oh, you don't need to.
He was just Tuesday with them.
So public hearing will be held next month at our regular monthly meeting, 7:00 PM. Nice, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
All right, moving along, this is now.
Just a point of order, if they returned or something to pin or something, can I go back to that? Send that in before the meeting?
The material, so because of the public interest, um, due to the petition, material should be submitted within 15 days of the public hearing into our record. And then that will be available for public inspection, um, for the commission review as well.
Okay. I think if maybe that base stone is just much wider and can be pinned further back, that would be the combination for.
Right, so.
Very large.
It was.
We shouldn't discuss it.
No, we shouldn't discuss it, but we're getting ready.
We have a question, you can call the office.
All right. Onto our second application for tonight, so this is going to be IWC 23-6. This is seven to the court. Michael J. Callanan is the applicant, Sarah C. Miller is the owner. This is for application for activity within 50 feet of an inland wetlands or water course for a freestanding garage, vehicles, storage, assessors map 72, lot 11, lot 189, and zone R80. So first, tonight, we need to review and make action on the special meeting site walk minutes. So if anyone doesn't have any changes, I'll take a motion to approve.
Take a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Any discussion? Who's voting in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, motion passes. Yeah, I guess, do Mr. Callanan?
Yes.
Do you want to come on up? I guess.
Most of us were, were you here last meeting?
Okay. Would you mind if we could bring up your site plan? Quick walk in, or commission again, what your plan is.
Yeah.
Start. Yeah, okay. Can you go up?
So with the existing driveway, my well is right here, there's a re-existing rock retaining wall. And obviously, the wetlands are back here. The whole front yard is the septic system with the, you know, the tank and the trenches over here. So based on the driveway entrance, we wanted to put a garage here and, you know, not impede, I know we're close to the wells, but not impede them, we're going to stay away from them. It just has, so that we can drive appropriately, because if we camp this too far, it's going to be planted so far after existing property that you're almost going to have to do 120 degree turn as opposed to just a 80, 90 degree. As I mentioned before in person, this wasn't our first choice, so it was kind of the only choice based on ledge out proppings. This property is structured where it's kind of pinpointing the rear block where I can't access it. Yes, we have, we're just shy of four acres, but it's landlocked between septic, the well, the ledge out proppings. So based that this was cleared already except for identical trees, we're just looking to kind of utilize that space and it wouldn't affect the secondary space for reserve for septic. Not going to affect the well, not going to affect the wetlands, yes, we're close to it, but not going to disturb anything existing, contour the land, because this area is lower than back here.
Any questions from the commission?
And there's no water source, it's just a heated, you know, we'll put heat in there, electricity and heat, but there's no water source, there's no, you know, dry well, anything like that.
Well, your foundation for this is going to be below the water line, which is very close to the wetlands. So when that water rises, it's going to hit the foundation.
Yep.
So you're going to have to waterproof the heck out of your foundation for one thing, just to save it if this is approved. And also, you need to have some space behind it, sort of a, some sort of a barrier that's about four feet away from the back of your building, even though it's so close to the wetlands, that you can walk around and actually do repairs and stuff if need be. You know, you're not walking into wetlands at that point.
You know, the water, you're sort of on the water table, so.
Correct, yeah, so whether it's a garage or a condition, we always waterproof everything. So, and secondly, there is enough space to walk behind it. And for the construction aspect, we're doing everything from the front, so there's going to be no equipment. Because everything's going to be from the front back, so we're taking that harder line, as I mentioned, in person, digging forward, backfilling from inside, there's going to be no machines.
You're also a construction engineer, right?
Yeah, I'm a builder.
Yeah.
So we do this every day, just now it's on my house.
Okay.
Where are you going to put your stockpile for all your kind of topsoil, excavated material?
Um, probably over here, because if you remember, when you came up the driveway, the shed was over here. So there's, once again, this is all open as well. So I have an area here and I have a plant here that's, there's nothing there but soil right now. And then there's a, it doesn't show it here, but there's an existing rock wall that leans down right here. And this is pitched toward the driveway. So it's already, everything is pitched away from the street and the wellens as it is. So I can stockpile it here and I can stockpile it here. And there's, and actually, because you guys saw my front yard, I can actually take this soil and put it in the front, because I'm still reestablishing my front yard as we did, as we finished the front walkway.
Around the perimeter of the inside of the garage?
Yep.
Is there concrete that comes up at all?
Yeah, you know, so what I was mentioning in person was, because of the elevation, because my driveway slants down like this, I can't have, this is actually going to be my elevation over here. So the goal is, this foundation is going to act almost like retaining wall, so it'd be at least 10 inches higher by code, but maybe up to 16 inches higher than the, than grade. And then my elevation of my floor will be set lower in there, in the foundation wall for two reasons. One, that is retaining wall. Two, to maintain this elevation to get in here, because all I have to do is probably come up two feet right here with the natural grade. It's a roughly two foot difference between each end of the property. And then this would just be, you know, the scratch right here, and I would just connect it to the existing pavement, you know, connect that. It would just be a slight grade. Because if I were to raise this forward to the wall height, I'd bottom out and be set to steep a grade. Then I'm going to set that elevation lower on the floor and have that act as a partial retaining wall. And then I'll just step the foundation down in front here as the grade slopes to the front.
Yeah, I think my concern there was that just knowing my own garage and my own shed
Yep.
is dispelling chemicals or gasoline getting spilled, because that's pitched out. It's already, it's, it's almost like you're spilling the driveway.
Exactly, and, you know, with, with this, I'll probably do a three inch pitch from front to back, so it won't actually be pitched that way. Typically, you know, fresh stone with a plastic under the stone that we pour, so even if it gets under, there's plastic and it kind of goes out. And I know there was some discussion about some potential plants behind the, the structure itself between the wetlands.
We, we wiped that out, remember?
Yeah, and I mentioned, I don't know if there's a specific species that you guys look for, but that was also an option.
She's got a base species.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
There is native species, and we knew, I'm sure, you know.
Yeah.
And we, in other towns, we've got to do rain gardens, and we have to put some plantings in there as well. So if there's something like that, or that form of survey, we've worked on. So if it's something like that, if needed or interested, we can always put some plantings back there to help with that. But, you know, with vinyl siding, it's not going to be back there and paint, so we're not worried about that. That's fallen vinyl, so it's not very, you know, maybe a power wash here and there, but with no chemicals, really just water.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So first thing we want to do, we can do it by consensus, do we believe that this activity is considered a significant activity?
No.
Okay, well, an agreement that we do not, by consensus, consider this application a significant activity? So with that, it is eligible for a decision tonight.
I, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Seven to the court, right? IWC 23-6. Michael J. Callan, 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 me, Callan.
Callanan.
That's what he said. So it's Sarah Miller. It's a map, map 20, map 72, block 11, lot 189, R80, right? And, and the, and the, and the, and so many approvals, it's solid erosion, you got to show everything.
Absolutely.
And then show us exactly where your place has it, the soils.
Yeah, once the trees are cleared, we, we stake everything out, we, and the surveyor has to stake out.
Yeah.
Typical protocol to be worked with.
Okay.
Well, I'll just share with you, sorry.
So with our, so your motion with our standard conditions, so general.
Yes, all general conditions.
Should I read those?
Read for the record, there's two I would have a question on, whether or not it's desirable to post a sediment and erosion control bond and the condition for the asphalt. The other only recommended condition from staff would be to, or they would actually be in your standard conditions, is to establish someone more prior to the start of clearing, so it's very clear as to where that one is.
Okay, so up for you, Eddie, I'll, I'll read the general conditions.
Good.
So not later than two weeks prior to the commencement of any work, permittee shall submit to the Clinton Inland Weapons Commission the names and addresses of any contractors employed to conduct such work and the expected date for commencement and completion of the work. Permittee shall give a copy of the permit to the contractors who be carrying out the authorized activities, installation of erosion and sedimentation control at discretion of the wetlands enforcement officer and inspection thereof prior to the start of construction, posting of an erosion and sedimentation control bond established by the commission, which we can set right after this, I'll, I'll read the last one, and then we'll need to set a bond. Permittee shall not deviate from the reference site plans and should not make the minimums changes without the prior authorization of the Clinton Inland Weapons Commission or the wetlands enforcement officer until authorized work has been completed. And on or before 90 days after completion of the authorized work, permittee shall submit ASPL plans. I, I believe you could probably remove the ASPL plans since, I'm sure, unless you make any changes.
You have to read your jury.
No, there's no changes, I mean, the surveyor's going to stake it, so if you want to, I mean, take pictures or, you know, I could, I could do an ASPL, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, we can remove the ASPL.
We gotta remove that.
As far as bonding for this one, so the schedule I came up with, if you guys consider.
Do you want to pin your motion and then establish the contract, or do you want to drag the motion?
Well, so the motion should have the bond amount in.
Right.
So we consider this a small, medium, or large project. Small's a thousand bucks, medium's 2,000, large is four. If you guys think of our bond amount, 80, medium, 2,000 bucks to award that. Yes, right, bond amount of $2,000. And then does anyone want to add any special conditions?
No, let, let us know what you're planning for, for planting and stuff.
I'll take it off, put another survey project that we did, and I'll send it over to see if you guys agree with it.
We appreciate it.
The only question I have was, because I'm a general contractor, you need my information, but you need all my individuals' selves?
Yes.
Everybody that works.
You're employed then? Yes. I would, I don't know.
I'd say, I mean.
If, if you're employing them, you're a company.
Yeah, I think, well, I mean, there are some subcontractors as well, I'm saying, they're not all employees, so.
Right, you're, you're like 1099 now?
Yes. Yeah, I think it's. Yeah. I just want to. General contractor.
I mean, that's not, yeah, he's a builder too, so he, he's a.
Just wanted to ask in case that was different.
You have four.
This is Laura. What, you good with it? Yeah.
Can I, can I have a point of clarification on the condition for additional plantings? Is there a particular location amount, does it have to come back to be approved by the commission prior to the start of construction? Or does this go by one dollar survey?
It, it's just, the well is off the glip. Just let us know when, when you plan.
It says species, they just want to know what that is.
As long as it's not.
There are not invasive species going in there.
What's a plant?
So there was no plantings in this application.
We were talking about.
Water, but what does that have to do with anything?
Well, if you, if you end up putting some plants in there that just kind of start growing into invasions.
Like bamboo, I could all understand.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't understand about the plantings.
So.
Bamboo isn't bad, no, it's good planting.
The driver, he not plant anything bad.
Yeah, don't, don't plant anything.
I wouldn't plant anything.
You don't plant anything right there.
Like I said, wherever that footing is, we're only going to go six inches past where it comes inside, so.
Right, there's no room to plant anything, anything.
Well, actually, he, we were talking about the water.
It was really only going to have a couple feet of the well, and it's, I mean, it's that one, right?
It's actually not.
I would just plant back there, I mean, plant anything.
So no, no, maybe.
No, I guess.
No special conditions.
No special. Well, I'm telling you, see, when you plant bamboo, I got, I mean, we got over there, I had to go over there a hundred times.
There's, there's species that kills fish and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, any additional special conditions that we want placed on this allocation? Bond amount, $2,000.
Yep.
Okay, so I have a motion by Eddie, do I have a second?
A second.
Twenty seconds, any discussion on this motion? Okay, all those vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, question carries. Thank you, Mr. Callanan.
Good luck. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Ben.
Good seeing you.
And you're moving along.
Oh, here you go, hard.
Oh, here you go, hard. Onto, um, the third application, so this is going to be IWC twenty-three dash seven, this is thirteen Stoney Point Road, also number sixteen A, Carlos Ortiz is the applicant, Petro Ortiz is the owner. This is for application for a regulated activity within fifty feet of an inland wetlands or water course. This is for building an addition that will consist of adding a living space as well as bedroom space. Total addition, building part of, will be part, or will be four hundred and ninety-five square feet. Access is map thirty-three, block thirteen, lot thirteen, zone R twenty. So the first thing we need to do is act on these special meeting site walk minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, one second.
One second.
Any discussion? Those voting in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose a standing? Site walk meeting minutes have been approved. Mr. Ortiz, are you here today? Want to come on up?
Come on, John, all right.
Tanya, it was nice hearing her last meeting, so if you could just kind of go through what you're planning to do, show us where the wetlands are and where your additions could be.
Um, so I'm adding, um, kind of the L shape addition to the home, this is the, obviously, the, the structure is there. So going out eight feet, coming down forty-two, eighteen, and this is fifteen now. So it's really just adding a, an addition to the side, the corner of the home. Um, so the wetlands or the water flow is actually off of my property technically. So this is the, the water flow that's going to be, you know, in the way or affecting this here. But it's about, I actually measured the other day, about twenty-nine feet off of my property, so, um, other than that, I mean, kind of simple.
Yeah, what's the, where does it end up, your addition? One, it's not particularly important if it's on your property or not. The other, where does your addition, how much closer does it, do you end up at the wetlands?
Eight feet.
Eight feet. And what's the max you, so once you've got that eight feet, what's the distance you are all the way to the wetlands?
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine point two. And the setback is twenty, so I've still got nine feet. I mean, that's it, I mean, um, all the, all, all, I mean, that, as you, we're speaking with the other gentleman, all vehicles, all, all work trucks, everything is going to be actually lined up here. This is where we're going to line up everything, all debris, all, all material is going to sit in this area here to here. My, um, my, uh, septic tank, septic system, tank is here, uh, trench is here, and it goes that way, so it's twenty-five feet from where we're going to be at. There's no water sources, no piping, all my, my main water source, my water line comes in from the back, septic goes into here, so there's really nothing, there's nothing over here, and there's nothing going to be added over there to cause any.
Oh, is that, yeah.
What, what kind of foundation, is it a slab foundation?
Yes, and, um, so there we go. So when I talk to the building department, I give you forty-eight, forty-eight inches, so we're going to go forty-two feet, uh, fifty-two feet down, or fifty-two inches down. Um, but we also have to bring it up, the allocation here is eleven-four, um, of my home, actually, the garage is nine-nine. So I have to bring this up two feet, so we're going to come up two feet here, um, which then and now, um, I would bring up the, the, this part of the home to match that four, so.
That's it.
Any questions or questions? Okay, so first thing that we're going to do, determination of the significant activity. Does anyone believe that this property is considered a significant activity?
No, no, we, we won't.
So by consensus, we find that it's not a significant activity, not on the whole hearing. Um, so it's eligible for a decision tonight, so. Motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
One second.
So, um, IWC twenty-three dash seven, thirteen Stoney Point Road, Carlos Ortiz. I'd like to approve that, um.
Can you?
Access is map thirty-three block.
Sorry, go ahead, finish.
Access is map thirty-three, block thirteen, lot thirteen. Zone R twenty.
Can you, would you mind adding to your motion per the, um, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-three site plans? Just so that we're referencing the latest.
Yeah, Ju- June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Right?
Yep.
Same thing, yep.
That, that, or, sorry, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Sorry, May eighteenth.
Well, if we have a revision through.
I would strike one more.
We have a revision through June fourteenth, that's the one that's on screen right now.
Okay, sorry, no, okay. Revision through.
Just go by what you say, why?
That's fine, we can add that. She's writing it down, so I'm adding that to your motion. And then you, I assume, just our general conditions?
Yeah, and, and of course, our general conditions, anyone to say aye?
So bond amount, what do we think, small, medium, large for this one?
I'd say small.
Because we need micro.
We need large, so that's our difference between small and small.
Small is two meters. Small is two meters. Small is for real.
So, okay, I'll read the general conditions. So not later than two weeks prior to the commencement of any work, permittee shall submit to the Clinton Inland Weapons Commission the names and addresses of any contractors employed to conduct such site work, and the expected date for commencement and completion of the work. Permittee shall give a copy of the permit to the contractors who be carrying out the authorized activities, installation of erosion and sedimentation controls at the discretion of the wetlands enforcement officer and inspection thereof prior to the start of work or construction, posting of erosion and sedimentation control bond in the amount of a thousand dollars. Permitation not deviate from the reference site plans and shall not make de minimis changes without the prior authorization of the Clinton IWC or the wetlands enforcement officer until the authorized work has been completed and on or before ninety days after completion of the authorized work, permittee shall submit asphalt plans. Yes. Do we, do we need an asphalt for this property?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I agree, if anything. Changes we want to, could change sometimes. Any other conditions that we'd like to add?
That's where you.
Okay, do I have a second, that is mentioned?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Said it's not going to exceed eight feet of existing structure.
You want to add a special condition?
I'm going to add, we.
That's good, said, no, I'm saying. No, I see a.
Leave it to the planters.
All right, all those vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose a standing? Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks, Ben.
I wore a shirt and a free candy, this time.
Okay, uh, the last one on the agenda tonight is IWC twenty-three dash nine. This is the gas station at one fifteen High Street. Dave Turner is the applicant, uh, CPD Properties, one fifteen High Street LLC is the owner. This is for application for regulated activity within fifty feet of an inland wetlands or water course. This is a replacement of three underground storage tanks, uh, access is map fifty-four, block fifty-four, lot seventy-eight, the zone R twenty. So first we'll need to make action on the special meeting site walk minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the site walk meeting minutes for IWC twenty-nine, twenty-three dash nine.
Okay. Four seconds, any discussion on those?
Yeah, I just want to add that, um, Lawrence, Michael, myself, have all been to the seven.
Do you, do you, can we put in the dates?
Yeah, I, I went today.
Today.
Larry went today.
Oh, yesterday.
Mike went yesterday.
Okay, so Larry and, um, Larry.
And we have.
Larry, Dave, today, four, yesterday.
We had, we had wish for the town, where to go. If we went together, we would have had posted.
Yep.
Okay, so Mike went today, oh, Mike went yesterday.
Yesterday.
And everybody else went today.
Yep.
All right, so do I have a, sorry, yeah, a second?
I'll second it.
Put, put a second in this. Any discussion on the special meeting site walk minutes? Those voting in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose a standing, okay. Okay, Mr. Turner, would you mind just quickly one more time, walk us through your site plan? I think it would probably be pertinent to talk about kind of where materials are going, the order, what you're doing, and probably timeframe, break rate.
My name is Dave Turner, I'm from East Turn Environmental, we do a lot of work for Chestnut Petroleum, it's a distributor, CPD, who own about a hundred gas stations in the Northeast. Um, thi- this is an existing shell station, uh, one fifteen High Street. There are three tanks that are now, the, the tanks, underground storage tanks are regulated by the DDP. They have an expected life expectancy, and the three tanks that they are, have exceeded their current life expectancy. So they are currently empty, and are not being used. We want to remove them per all DDP, uh, closure requirements, and then replace them. And there are three tanks now, uh, there's one here, two here, we want to replace them with two tanks that have three compartments, which will be put essentially in the same location. All the work we're proposing is, uh, in the paved area, right? So it's all in the upland area, it's all, uh, in front of the curb, if you will. Um, there's concrete, uh, slabs over the tanks right now, those will be removed. There's a procedure that we use, the tanks are empty now, they'll be cleaned before we start doing any work. When we do remove concrete or asphalt and, and what's around it, it's called peystone. Uh, that would be stockpiled on paved area. Tanks come out, the tanks are actually crushed, they're fiberglass tanks, they're crushed in the dumpsters on site to be all the way disposed properly. The peystone will then be pushed back into the excavation until we can dispose it. Because of the way this goes, the peystone's got to be pretty much pristine when we put bed in new tanks. So we can't have pipe, we can't have a piece of concrete, we can't have the stone. So the existing peystone will get disposed of off-site. During the whole process, we take a number of samples from around the tank to a closure report for DDP. We have no expectation of finding contamination at this point in time, but we will screen and test for it and provide a closure report to DDP. If contamination is found, material would be disposed of properly. So everything's on, uh, paved area, on the upland side, uh, some will be temporary, we'll be, we'll just figure with, uh, a steel fence around. There is also one catch basin by the road, which will protect, uh, some sort of, uh, silk trap fabric, probably incomes. We'd like to do it as soon as possible, I understand there's, it's a public notice period and so on, but as soon as that were, uh, whatever, uh, expired, we'd like to start, and I think that would be September first, I'm not sure, was it three week period or two week period? So within the, uh, interval, we'd like to start.
How many days is it?
Fifteen days when the data decision.
Yeah.
That is published, and if it gets approved tonight, it'll be published in the Harper News next week on Thursday.
I, I have one question. I actually did walk down. Right, I, I get it, I showed my legs and proved. The, I found, uh, is, whose property is that? Let's go down to the one, is that Blue Shell?
A portion of it is, is Shell's property.
Okay, so I found tires, I found stuff that's detrimental to the water course. I found toilets, porcelain, wood, pressure treated.
Oil, soap.
Oil, soap, wood, everything. I found more stuff in that area, it's unbelievable, um, how much stuff I found, that's why I kept going. And then I had to fall, so. But, um, it's, that, it's very detrimental to the, uh, water, uh, water course. And it's an active water course. The soils are all there, all these soils from the, from the, uh, and, and everything that we cherish is, is being disrupted, so that has to.
So you're talking about stuff that's been disposed of?
Yeah, illegally, and I don't know if it came out of that, I don't know if it came, there was a lot of different people that was in that, that place, so I'm sure the, the toilets came from inside that place, I, I'm just guessing.
Is that one line where you present your property?
It's significant, your property.
So they would awesome toilets, those pushing that dotted ones.
Yes, it did.
Do you think so, or?
Okay.
No.
And I think.
I suspect. Because that's only a couple feet off of the curb line.
Right.
I suspect that the other, where you're seeing stuff, if you're seeing stuff, may not be their property.
Right.
I, I can't tell you where it came from, um, I mean, I, I know CPD does not dump stuff out the back door, but there, there may be stuff that came from other dumping activities.
Yeah, it's not his property.
Well, part of it is your property, and so now that we know about it, what do we, what do we know about?
Well, I think that's maybe something that just Cathy out to, to remedy separately from this. One, we don't know where the property lines are, you know, I, I know from personal experience, driving by there for ten years, you have the house next door that has regularly had lots of debris in that area so far on front lawn for.
Two by fours, that pressure treat is, is on the other side.
Well, I agree with you.
It goes all the way around the whole, the whole block, it goes around the whole area.
Sure, and I think that probably needs to be remedied, and it's probably something that Cathy would take a look at, but I don't think it's completed.
It's not related to this job, I was asking if, who's responsible, who owns it, you said part of it, then. So I, I would say, if they're gonna, sure, if they're gonna do that anyway, I mean, it's got to be taken out.
If DDP's gonna be there looking at that stuff, we're gonna.
They're gonna make it clean.
I think also, you know, in, in my opinion, I know you got to get these tanks in quickly, you know, and you.
I don't think it is, because.
And, and that, to me, is not an issue, it's painting your pants, you know? Because I think they've already been there, it's not like it's a new endeavor that's going on there, but it's, you know, you know, the wonder, you don't want to get tied up in a bunch of, uh, conversations about it.
So I, I do agree, since you bounce on them, we should clean it up, I'm not saying it was not that bad. But if you look, the blue line is his steel fence, the red line right behind it is the property line.
So how do you know where, where I was? I'm, I'm, I was like a few feet, it's a few feet, well, it's at the end of the driveway.
That's the curb.
That's, so that, that black line, the black line's the curb, the blue is the steel fence, which looks to be a couple feet behind it.
Okay.
And then that's the property. So you're almost describing like it's on, in the wooded area behind it.
It's behind the bushes, yeah.
Which was actually, I looked it up on Town GS, it's the Red Making Foundation, which I believe.
They will never.
They, they do, um, isn't it night conservation?
Yeah, it's the way of conservation.
Yes, whatever you know.
So I believe what you're finding, it looks like it's on there properly.
Okay, I was just concerned about it, but.
So if I can, if you, Mr. Chair, so procedurally, the, the subject of this application is very narrow, and is relative to the wetland review of the activities that have been proposed, and so that's the action for this evening. What we will do is do a staff investigation and maybe catch up with you several.
Okay, I'm fine with those, I'm fine with the job, I'm fine with that, what you're supposed to have to do.
Yeah, but we need, if there's an enforcement action that needs to be taken, we can move around that path, because it's a parallel action, but not as.
Well, finally, we did, which is that, I, I seen a million of them.
But it's a good point, I mean, if we find stuff while we're out, we shouldn't just go on waiting on it. So I agree, if we could pass that on to Cathy as an enforcement action and.
Okay.
Let it move through Cathy's channels and.
Okay. Not trying to get in our.
And if Cathy does find that it is on the subject property, she can do, if it's a violation, can have it moved, that as well. I have a feeling though, it's probably on the property behind that, that all that's in, it's not.
Is what you toilet?
Okay, so any questions from the commission on this application? The, the only one that I have is, um, so your procedure, you take out soil, you do testing, if you find dirty dirt and say it's going to rain tomorrow, what is your. If you find dirty dirt and say it's going to rain tomorrow, what is your, how would you handle it?
So, um, there, there are a couple of things, so, uh, when tanks are removed, there's a screening process for the soil. There's an immediate screening process with a photolivation tech that's to detect volatile air. Uh, there's a post-exervation test process for a sample to go to laboratory. If we find, state the soil, if we find elevated, there's, there's a spill report that goes to Canadian DDP. So if spills reported, they're either gonna come or they're not gonna come, typically they're not gonna come, just is the way it goes. We then plan to do a remediation, and we try to figure out how far we have to go to perform a remediation to get to background concentrations of soil that is removed, contaminated stuff. What typically would occur is, we would plan that, we would excavate, make a stockpile of contaminated soil. So most of the pea gravel, we don't expect to be contaminated, but there might be stuff around the edges. Then we would put down plastic, make a stockpile covered with plastic, possibly surrounded with hay bales, whatever, but it's covered. Um, and depending on the amount, it could be covered until we can get an approval for disposal, or we can live load it, if we have, if we know what it is, we can live load it into trucks and it goes that day. Depends on the quantities. There's no indications of all, uh, of, of any releases on this site. The current tanks have inventory control and line leak detection and a bunch of stuff. Uh, we have no indication that it's been released here.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, um, so first thing we need to do, determination if we consider this, um, application as a different activity.
No.
By consensus, we determine it's not, so it does not warrant a public hearing. Um, so with that, it is eligible for a decision.
I think, I think a motion to approve it, IWC 23, that.
Second.
Your names with the second?
Sessions map 54 lot, 54 lot, 78 zone R4.
In accordance with the site plan dated June 8th? Is that the most recent? Um, standard general conditions?
Yeah, the conditions, yeah.
Okay, one more time, I'll read those. Uh, and then, before I read those, what are we thinking about bond, small, medium, large? This is a large, four grand bond for this one?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so, conditions are not later than two weeks prior to the commencement of any work. Permittee shall submit to the Clinton Inland Wetlands Commission the names and addresses of any contractors employed to conduct such work. We expect a date of commencement, completion of the work. Permittee shall give a copy of the permit to the contractors who will be carrying out the authorized activities. Installation of erosion and sedimentation controls at the discretion of the Wetlands Enforcement Officer. Inspection thereof prior to the starting construction. Posting of erosion and sedimentation control bond in the amount of $4,000. Uh, permittee should not deviate from the reference site plans and should not make the minimalist changes without prior authorization of the Clinton Inland Wetlands Commission or the Wetlands Enforcement Officer until the authorized work has been completed. And on or coordinated days after completion of the authorized work, permittee shall submit as-built plans. Any other special conditions we'd like to add to this application?
OSHA certified people. Yeah, the job.
I don't think we need to include that condition, like.
That's, that's.
Yeah, that's kind of beyond our purview. Any conditions? Very good. Okay.
We have a rule to stay.
Yes.
Condition.
Yeah. Uh, do I have a second, a second?
Thank you.
There are seconds, any discussion on this question? Those vote, if they are, say, I.
Hi.
Those are the statements. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
I'd like to say one more thing, so, uh, the company that does this, that's what they do, that's all they do is underground tech work all the time.
Is this service station?
No, it's, uh, it's actually a construction group that CPD put together, cause they own 100 gas stations.
Yeah.
To be literally constantly, either tanked up, top upgrades.
Cause I, my, my wife's a lot of service, service station. Those guys do.
Yeah, well, it, it, uh, it's specialized work and there's certain, it's OSHA 40-hour training.
Right, yeah, you guys probably.
A bunch of dollars, and, I mean, you know, working with gas stations, if there are hazards, we take, uh, extreme precautions to prevent.
Could, could, could I ask you a quick question? Do you remember years ago off of Plains Road, exit 36, the gas station in that corner? And the police department was down the street, and the gas was leaking for so many years? It went down, all the way down from the high street room?
Yeah.
Remember that?
Yes.
And, and, and a person was in their yard digging, and, and a fire came out. Just went out, and they, and they had to take out.
Yeah.
They had, it was like eight houses in the power, all the yards were saturated with gas, and it came from the gas station.
Preferential path, so when you do like a sewer line or a water line, you put it in the gravel?
Yeah.
Creates a.
Well, I'm stuck. I knew of a guy who was, was, was putting in tanks, and there was a crew of guys, you know, I don't know the person personally, but it came in on him when he was down there digging, you know, and that's why, you know, and I don't know, I, I don't think the guy was those sort of.
Well, that's a true story, well, so.
Very weird. Thanks, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Okay, on to staff reports, so Kathy's done, David will make it with us tonight, I think she might be out for a bit. So Abby, do you mind?
Yep, absolutely, so, um, so IWC 21, 14, 15 Baxter Road, there's wood chips, uh, men with the non-communicative wetlands. So the violation that this was issued, the majority of the removal has been completed. I believe at your last meeting, you discussed, um, just sort of a final review of the stabilization of the slope and remaining wood chips and the sediment, sediment inversion controls. Uh, one thing, so, so we'll, we'll talk about the site condition first, and then, um, the conditions that were done as a part of the permit to remediate this project. So the, the silt, so, big picture, this, the majority of the wood chips have been removed. There is dirt mixed with wood chips compacted down the slope itself, um, as well as a very, very small room. Um, there are these deeper wood chips at the bottom, however, it's, it's minimal, we're talking about perhaps a foot of material at most. Uh, there are silt fences in place at the bottom, however, it's not been towed in, it's not dug in, it's just sort of up. We're gonna have to see through the bottom in these locations, so it's not doing much there anyway. There's been no migration of sediment that I saw when, when I was out there, I went to go, um, with Kathy to take a look at this. Some vegetation, very, very sparse, is starting to populate back on that slope, that's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a very, 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 it's a very steep slope. There's been no, um, planting or further stabilization beyond the wood chips. There's some wood worth starting, there's some bittersweet starting, so some, you know, some more invasive or opportunistic species are coming in. Um, there also was not a condition of the permit to remediate that slope in any particular way, it was specifically to remove the wood chips. So the, so right now, um, we have reports, at least formal reports, from Chuck Mandel, who's the engineer assisting the property owner in the remediation work, who noted that during the more recent very, very heavy rains that we had, um, there was no reeling or erosion or threat to the wetland below that was observed. And so it is that the wood chips are doing what wood chips do to stabilize, um, a property. In fact, in slopes like this, some of the construction sites, and actually, out of conditions on the things that said, put a small wood chip around the bottom to protect anything that may come through, use that as a filter rather than trying to put silt fence into rocky area.
This is spent on forever.
Yes.
And, 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 and it was 20 loads that went in down there, 20. 20 loads. And then the guy removed them and went around the corners, Jamaica, well, I don't, you know that, but why don't we just get rid of, this is, this is conditional.
Yep, the, the only outstanding thing that you had on your conditions, um, I believe the decision was April 13th. Um, was the date of publication, it was honored for 90 days after the completion of the authorized work. Permittee shall submit as-built plans, you had, of the general conditions, that as-built was one of the conditions. So that's really the only outstanding thing from the permit that this commission issue is whether or not that as-built, um, is required to make sure that you understand what that slope looks like at points in time.
Everybody's, everybody's went out there 100 times with that.
I, I obviously understand that, but the, the specific condition was the as-built plan.
So this is, have Chuck, do the as-built, said, we can get rid of this, I'm sick of this.
He can give a reminder.
For two years.
We can give a reminder, but I can't compel him to necessarily, under violation proceedings, but.
He's given receipts to Kathy, unknown of the, the dump loads that he's removed from.
All of the other conditions.
And there was some issue with some, maybe some additional draining going on, so there was a question of maybe, you know, in the future, maybe the town, we can get together with somebody, if you do some sandbags or something in that area, or, you know.
Then they have to pay for it, it's not, it's not.
But the people shouldn't have to pay, you know.
He bought that property.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we, we should not be wrong on that property, once, once you've won, that's it.
That's right.
We're done. We, this is kind of a dead horse.
Yeah, I think he's gotten more than.
The as-built, Chuck Mandel should have, as the engineer.
It's a question, why didn't he have to do this?
Yeah, I know, we should have dumped 20 loads of wood chips, so. Come on.
It's probably, it's probably. It's probably not fighting, right?
So we can, we can certainly remind the engineer of record for the project that the as-built is required to go down that path, otherwise it would be a modification of this condition to remove the requirement for as-built. That's the discretion of the commission, but the decision that was published included that requirement, and that's why, is one reason it keeps recurring. So, that's what's been, yeah.
What do you think, Scott, what should we do here?
She's been getting it removed, that was part of it.
It was part of our condition, it was part of our whole issue.
She, she followed it to it.
The problem is, what happens if we don't get it? It will hang out as a violation until we do, and the only way to get them is to, uh, file. Until we do get it.
Oh, like we did to Stonewall?
So, I mean, how, how much longer will this hang out, or? I mean, it's very minimal, but if that's something that we want from the applicant, we should roll into it.
But it's a simple thing.
It's a simple thing.
But he has to pay an engineer to, to finish a plan to send out.
I'm not, he already paid Chuck Mandel for all this work, what can Chuck just do it for?
It'd take him 20 minutes. It's not. Yeah, it's not us.
And I'm, I'm saying, it's not us, but it, it's not our, it's not our.
How about a reminder of the deadline with P, the, uh.
Yeah, that's it.
Should we do something?
Let's do that.
Yeah, so we, what we can do is essentially say that if, you know, we note the date at which the completion of the work was done, so that that started at 90 in the clock, and then from there, if it's, if it would be a violation of the permit that was issued.
How many days is it been at?
I have to go back in the records and see if we can.
Approximately.
It's, um, definitely.
60, 70?
There's something, sometime over this summer.
60, 70 days, so if, if he doesn't have a date, just charge him. Maybe, maybe absorb it, it's me, and the guy who does it, we need to do.
Well, we're gonna follow the, the standard violation procedure.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I don't think there's a desire on anyone to part with you to go down that path, so that one against.
Stonewall. Stonewall. I remember Stonewall.
Okay, so, we'll leave it on there, we'll have Kathy reengage, remind him of the 90 days, and once we hit 90 days, we can discuss with the commission how we're going forward.
Yeah.
If I'm. It's done. Just the work's done, we just, let's cross the same line. Okay. Zero blame?
Zero blame is a similar situation, the work has been completed, it's been inspected, um, and we are waiting for the same condition as built. To come in. It's a issue.
Zero blame, oh. Yeah. And the, okay, what happened to that work?
That was. Chuck Mandel.
No.
Um, it was Michael Ott, Rich Norski.
Well, it was like, oh, yeah, it was like.
So I guess, but that work was all done.
Kathy approved it.
Again, uh, okay, so it's like whatever 90 days is, for that, and maybe we could do the same thing, contact them, let them know about the 90 days and the requirement.
Genius, I think. Maybe that.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so thank you, Abby, for the staff reports, uh, I don't know, five correspondence. So I guess we had some deep correspondence from this month, the verification and the SSI.
Um, actually, that was left on.
From last, right? I thought we had one last year.
We had one last month, it, it's been 130 days ago, so they're doing it.
Uh, I don't know, six old business, I don't think we have any old business to talk about, seven new business. So just one thing I want to bring up is our meetings, held in person now. Uh, but Abby did say that there's ability to do it hybrid, that if one of our members needs to be online for a meeting, we're able to accommodate.
We have, we have visitors here, could they introduce themselves?
Uh, it's, you know. You're the chairman? Not a public chairman.
So not a public chairman?
I don't know, we can add to the agenda if you'd like.
I would add, if you could.
Can we finish, can we finish new business first?
Sorry, I didn't realize, it's not a discussion here on the agenda, but we're sharing some correspondence from, um, members of the older Lake Tex district relatives to 56 West Shore, and concerns specifically over the septic system, so we'll make sure everybody gets a copy of that.
Yeah.
It's.
Sure, I'll have her. Uh, it's on the website.
Okay.
Go to the, um, document center.
Under the, uh, the.
Under the, the monel, it's not, it's not related to an application.
Okay.
Um, but it's in, and you go into the document center, go to current material, reading materials, and look for the meeting. The August meeting, it says 2003, oh, eight, there is a letter there.
But the link at the end of the agenda will take anybody to the correspondence.
Okay, so, uh, let's just finish up this, so, hybrid meetings, what, what would be the, how would we work it if, say, my Cloro is going to fall?
So what we would do is we'd post the meeting as a hybrid meeting, that means folks could attend either in person or using our fancy L tool, we would, um, have a Zoom meeting, um, we're gonna end, go to meetings, I think we seem to have some use of that particular platform. Um, but, but basically, folks could just dial in the same way they always would, it would be a video conference or a call-in. Um, and the only real thing would be whether folks are presenting, and you'd hear the speaker, and then we'd share your screen the same way we did during, um, virtual meetings, and then folks in the room could also see it. What I've seen work well in other places is essentially you, you take care of anybody's questions or comments in the room first, and then open it up to folks who are calling in, um, we just make sure that we do this with that in every, every discussion, and then off we go. Um, it would be open to, again, it's open to the public, so whether it's an applicant calling in, a commission member, or somebody from the general public with a comment for a public hearing or a question, um, it's open to all.
In a hybrid setting, does somebody always have to be here?
If it's hybrid, yes, the meeting is essentially how, the, there will be at least a staff person here to, you know, accommodate anybody in the room.
Essentially not a member of the commission.
It is possible, but, but, yeah, it's possible, but we'd have, we'd comment to the public here as well.
Okay. So I think maybe all, try to make our, our meetings in person, but if you have something that makes you have to take it at home, we can, uh, do that. So.
We just need to note that by your.
It's a huge kind of privilege.
The only, the only difference is that we have to make sure that the postings happen more than 48 hours in advance. We have to make sure that's available to the public and, and stuff, so we just need to know a little bit earlier from folks if we are going to attend, not attend, or if, say, if we ask a member of applicants, if there's a reason, or if, um, or if a member of the public asks for accommodation, if they can't, if you're.
Yeah, well, I, 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 what I'll do is, what, 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 what if somebody becomes sick? And it's 24 hour, and, and that person has a lot of information, cause he didn't pay 48 hours, he's not allowed to participate.
There's a difference between, there's a difference between posting, or by stature, the difference between posting a hybrid meeting in which it's open to the general public for anyone to participate, be it either method or it's a hybrid, versus that old method of someone could call into the meeting. Um, that's a little bit different, if there's, if we're simply setting up a Zoom meeting so that one person is who's up, you know, unexpectedly unable to attend, calls in, that's not a hybrid meeting, that's an in-person meeting to which a participant is calling in, and that's just a sort of one-off kind of a thing. It's not being set up as.
So you're giving 48 hours for that?
Not, not for that, so, so say you got sick, but you wanted to participate, and we found out 20 minutes before the meeting, we can set you up to be able to call in. Uh, that's a little bit different from posting it to the public and say, we are going to make this a hybrid environment for anybody to participate. A lot of what we're seeing right now is folks are doing the in-person piece and then hobbling gross if they need it. Um, and then if, again, if winter comes or things change, or, you know, forms become problematic or whatever else, we can simply post it as hybrid and run it that way too. So it's pretty flexible, it's just if it's gonna be posted as hybrid with the length available to the general public, that has to be noticed to the commission members 48 hours in advance. in advance as well as the public.